I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one approval of minutes, the October 7, 2015 minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Any changes, errors, or omissions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Upstayed.
One abstention. Howard. Motion passes. I have one item that I would like to add to our agenda tonight, and it's a packet that's with you. It has to do with the LED streetlights from Eversource, and I would like to add that under new business, letter D as in David. With that one change, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carl and Ryan Curley. The next, under communications and correspondence, we have an update from our Complete Streets group. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Sure. Thanks for having us. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Heron. I'm a member of the Portland CSG, which stands for Complete Streets group. And as we've reported before, we're a citizens' action group that is, was created a little over a year ago, June of 2014. And our mission is to improve the streets of Portland for all users, encourage non-motorized modes of transportation, promote healthier living, and facilitate better connections between our citizens and areas that are of interest to them, or as we call them, nodes of interest, where they want to go. While I can't cover everything that we've worked on since our June meeting, I did want to cover the top five or six things that we've been doing, and then open it up to any questions that you may have. Themes tonight are kind of circling around growth and progress and support and change. So under growth, with both our core members and supporters, for our 2015 to 16 plans, we've grown our core group from eight to 10 Portland citizens in order to help with the additional work that we're anticipating over this next year. As our chairperson, my lovely wife Kathy, reported to you, back on June 3, we received great feedback and comments and support from both our public forums that we had in 2015, as well as our members continue to, I guess, circulate the information and promote complete streets within Portland. As far as progress goes, we continue to meet our short-term goals for last year and are working towards our long-term goals. Among them, providing positive input with regards to the complete streets concepts, to the planning and zoning commission for the POCD that they are creating for Portland. We're currently awaiting their final draft document to review in order to provide any final comments and suggestions to the P&amp;Z. Also, we happily accepted and have begun to use a portion of the $27,500 in joint funds approved by the Board of Selectmen for use by the ALT Committee and CSG, and we're planning on allocating $8,000 to the RFQ for our complete streets plan. To that end, we have helped Deanna Rhodes, town planner, with creating the scope and the wording for the RFQ, to hire the consultant or firm that would create Portland's initial complete streets plan, or CSP, as we call it. The RFQ is currently being reviewed by First Selectmen, and I believe the Director of Finance at this time. Final approval hopefully will come soon, and we hope that it'll be released before mid-November so we can start the selection process in December. Under support and change, the CSG, you know, just really appreciates all the positive feedback and support that we've received from both fellow citizens, groups that we've connected with, and specifically you, our Board of Selectmen. We also realize that over this next year is really when more of the rubber is going to be hitting the road. To be more specific, we're talking about increased and safer bicycle and pedestrian routes, possibly along our Main Street Route 17A corridor. As you're probably aware of, there's a planned VIP resurfacing project for 2016, and that should give us a chance to implement some of the state and national complete streets guidelines that are already in place. Our own CSP plan may not be completed by the time the project is underway, but there should be ways to include some traffic calming measures while improving the markings of crosswalks and lane whiffs for bicycle traffic. This, of course, will require continued leadership and action on our part, on your part, and we hope to, we really want to continue to inform and educate households, individuals, and businesses within our community about what complete streets is and how it will add positive things to our community. All we're really asking for you now is really the same that we've been granted from you in the past, and that's your continued support and openness to change that'll help to improve Portland's streets and access to non-motorized modes of transportation. And finally, of course, all of our meetings are open to the public, and I would certainly extend a warm welcome and invitation to any of the BOS and our fellow townspeople to our upcoming meetings. Our next one in November is the 12th. It's on a Thursday. As usual, it's in the Van Bynum Room right here in the library, and it starts at 6:30. And you can reach out to me, or Kathy, or anyone else on our CSG if you want to just learn some more about complete streets or where we are at any point in the year. So last note, I'll just say that we are kind of, this is the first unveiling, I guess, of our logo that we're looking to actually, the other thing we try and really do is not reinvent the wheel. So there's a logo that Middletown has used, and maybe some other cities and towns have used it as well, and this is what we're going to be using. We still got to tweak it a little bit, put Portland underneath it, but this is the first that I've shown that to anyone. John Hall just got permission from the Middletown group that we can use that. They were very fired up about it. And we're hoping that, you know, East Hampton and other towns will kind of use this, and this will kind of be a symbol that people in this area at least will know, oh, this is a complete streets area. This is good. So, and that's really it. That's my update. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer it or get back to you.
We'll start this side. Any questions?
I have nothing for me.
Great job.
Yeah, great. Thank you all.
We're on the way. I appreciate the update. I think it's important to periodically come in and tell us what you're doing. You're doing a great job.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. It's a great committee.
All right.
Rick Kelsey went out to get some information for us, so I'm going to test if we would wait for the tie-in-bond proposal. So I'm going to wait on that, and we'll go to appointments to boards or commission. Are there any appointments today?
No, not at this time.
And because the information he's bringing is item 8A, we will go to item 8B, which is a resolution for the federal fiscal year 2015 Homeland Security Grant Program. And this is a resolution that we pass annually in order for us to participate in the emergency management and homeland security, Department of Emergency Services, and public protection dollars. Most of these are held by the, let's see, it's the Capital Region Council of Governments, and we're a participant in their emergency management program. So I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Did you hear that?
Sorry, I have a little bit of a cold. I know that didn't come out.
Brian, and seconded by Kathy. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item, under new business, is refund of excess payments.
I'll try again. 4999 to DL Peterson Trust.
Seconded by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
$10.09 to Brian D. Moody or Tammy L. Moody.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
41783 to Jordan Bouchard.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is letter D under number 8, which is information that I gave to you at your tables on the Connecticut Light and Power Company doing business as Eversource Energy for street and security lighting. And I had announced at our last meeting that we would be having a demonstration project of LED streetlights in Portland, and CL&amp;P will be installing these. And they will be installing 50. They'll be available for street, highway, off-street, security lighting for dusk to dawn, or midnight lighting services as provided within this agreement. It's rate 116. And they go through quite a bit of detail as to how much it will cost us, and the fact that these lights will be of a higher luminosity, let's say. They're brighter. They focus light down onto the street better, and they are also very, very energy efficient, and they also do not require replacement as other types of streetlights. They go for a long time, and the hours, I think, are presented here. It's years as opposed to less than, less than a year to replace light bulbs. So I wanted to present this to you and show you that there will be some net savings. There is an increased cost for the installation of them, but you save in your yearly charge. And for the 50 lights, which is the demonstration project, the town would save $1,431.16 each year.
Do you know when they're going to do this?
As soon as we, my office gives approval. I wanted to get your approval for this. They're anxious to get these installed. And the location is along Portland Cobalt Road from the East Hampton Portland line west, and it should take us into Marlborough Street, which will be, hopefully, where, you know, it's an area where we have a lot of accidents. So we're thinking that would be a good place for us to have the demonstration lights. It brings attention to drivers, that the lights have changed a bit in that area. Maybe they'll pay more attention to the road, slow down, not be distracted in their driving by other means, and also have better lighting that's focused. The other thing that the Eversource representative told me is that the LED lights are a whiter light, and you're supposed to see better with them. You know how the other lights are kind of yellow at night? These are a whiter light. You're supposed to see colors better, and an improvement to the security on that road.
When you say to Martha Street where it changes?
I think it'll take us all the way to the end, Kathy.
To Main Street?
To Main Street.
That'd be good.
Because there's actually about 48 streetlights, so it won't be quite 50. They listed all the streetlights that we own, and those will all be replaced. So I would like to get them moving on this, but I wanted to bring it to you first because it's something we've talked about a long time.
This time it's 25 in the Portland Library. We'll be closing in 15 minutes.
And as you know, many towns have gone this route, but to have a demonstration before we actually decide it's something that you might want to proceed with around town, I thought it would be helpful. So I'll open it up for discussion.
Good idea, good location. You want to move forward right now?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to move forward.
Okay, motion's been made.
For the installation as a demonstration project of the lighting.
Is there a second? Seconded by Kathy. Discussion. Brian?
What is the cost of that?
If you look at the chart that was prepared, it shows the yearly charge. We're not being charged to install them. Eversource is installing them. But in terms of the yearly charge, it's 9,000, right?
807.
Excuse me. And then the yearly charge, HPS charge versus the LED charge, excuse me, would be a savings yearly of 1,400, not monthly. I misspoke.
What are they referring to on page 8 of A?
I don't believe there would be anything for the customer because there's nothing additional. We're not putting in any new poles. It's retrofitting, so there's no new poles that will be installed or no underground work.
I think that's if you wanted additional streetlights requested, but if we requested more to be installed, then there would be a charge.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Rick, were you able to obtain the information?
Yes, I was.
I think with the indulgence of the selectmen, I would like to move on to new business since we have guests here tonight that had a question about a permanent easement, which is letter A under 8, new business. Two, three. The stemmers have come here tonight at the request of the Zoning Board of Appeals and after consulting with the Public Works Director. Very simply, stemmers are building a garage on their property that borders Valley View School's property. It's way up the hill from Valley View School, and they were recommended to come, and they came to me, and I had some consultation with Rick Kelsey on this as well, and they were requested to come and ask for an easement because at one point, one small area where the garage is, it's only two feet from the border of the Valley View land. And to have a 10-foot easement behind that area would allow them to do work and maintenance on that building, and it limits, we believe, would limit any liability to the town should there be any occurrence of any nature there. So you have some paperwork in front of you, and I'll give you a minute to review it, and then we might have some questions. They are in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and before the appeal is granted, they were asked by the Zoning Board of Appeals to come to us for this easement. They felt that it was in the best interest of both parties, the town and the stemmers.
Yes, sure. I just want to get my bearings on where this is. So, do you want to come up, please? All right, this is High Street. So Valley View is down here, and then you have like three houses here. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
All right. So this is very close to the Valley View School, but the upper, not the school itself, but the upper part of the property. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that might help you.
Valley View is way down here.
Okay.
And that's where we plan to put in the garage and the flats.
Okay.
That's our house right there.
That's the retention basis.
The high school is near that key. Valley View is way down there.
Yes, yeah. I understand. I just, like, okay.
Yeah.
It just happened to be right on this.
Yeah, see, look, the property line is actually 18, 16, or 17 feet.
From that corner there?
That's almost eight feet right there. The only part that comes in contact is that's like two feet. And the reason we can't, the reason we can't come this way anymore because if we come in there, we're not, we can't turn our cars around.
Oh, okay.
If I come in, if I come in there for two feet, this power will hit that car before we turn around.
Yeah.
So that's the reason we're requesting an easement.
And I think I saw a picture of the garage that's this here, right, that you want to build?
Basically, a simple stall box.
Yeah.
And store every reverse 14 feet.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
This doesn't interfere with the town's ability to do whatever we're doing, sounds like.
No. It's far, far from the school. Do you know where that is?
I got a general sense.
Yeah. Do you know where, let's see, Rich, around us?
Mm-hmm.
It's behind there, so it's way up on that.
I would also point out that many years ago, this time my family gave the land to the town for the building of the high school and the Valley View School. And then more recently, when the high school was built, we also had to do some land rearranging in order for us to build the high school. So I want to thank you and your family for that many years ago and not so long ago.
You gave too much away.
That's all. We all said, um... So what do we have to do? This is unusual.
I need your approval to allow this to proceed. And of course, Jay and Denise, we will check this with our attorneys to make sure that if there's anything additional that we need to do, we would work with you and your representative of your council. But I think in concept, certainly what you presented is appropriate. It's pretty simple.
Right. Yeah, I think that's fine.
So what, what motion would be for you to proceed?
With the easement and making certain that any and all legal requirements are met appropriately by our town council.
I'll give that. I'll move that.
Motion made by Brian.
Oh, Brian.
Seconded by Howard.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is permanent. We don't need to, it's not like the YMCA where you need to renew it every year or so, then this would be one shot.
This would be forever. This would be forever on their grant. We're giving this up for 100 years from now. It'll be on there. It's forever and ever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So we'll be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Denise, did you want to have a copy of this just so you know? Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Good luck with your garage.
Yes, good luck.
Good night.
Okay. The next item we have. Rick, we're going to go back to old business, which is continuing the discussion of the tie-in-bond proposal concerning the water and the wastewater system. I did convey to the MDC, and I think that Carl may have also, Carl, sorry to interrupt, but I think you had also had some, did you have any conversation in terms of the money?
Yeah, they were talking about that, and they said, we're still, they're still negotiating, still negotiating with tie-in-bond. That's the actual price, and that'll be working back and forth, and depending on the scope and how the scope could be possibly changed and amended, or, you know, exactly what we want and what they need, that that price could be changing to get closer to the $50,000.
Who'd you talk to?
Scott Johnson.
Oh, you did.
I brought the minutes.
Do you imagine that we wanted to come to the meeting and talk to, to do the presentation?
Yeah, that's the whole thing. It's, he hasn't really seen it as to what they're going to be doing. So upon...
They got to take another, I did send it to their chief engineer.
All right.
So I don't know that they've had a chance to review it, but I will review for the selectmen what, some of what was discussed last time. Some things need correction, and I think Rick and I have worked a bit on that. Concern was expressed regarding the fee schedule. Members of the selectmen board thought MDC agreed to pay $50,000, and we would be asking that they look at the extra cost to cover that as well. Let's see. Rick Kelsey gave clarification of the reservoir as an emergency supply resource. Fred pointed out it is an asset, and Rick said the determination was made not to use it except for emergencies, and they tie-in-bond may not immediately identify the need for the reservoir. And let's see if there was any other specific questions. I don't think there was anything specific. I think it really amounted to sort of the money. Rick, did you have some comments?
No, no, no. I just would, oh, I do have one question. Do we know what the present deficit is in Eversource?
I don't have that information.
It'd be interesting to know that.
So do you want to wait until we know from tie-in-bond in terms of the dollars?
Yeah, things we...
May as well.
Can't do anything till we know.
Right. So I will bring it back again.
One thought. Is there any indication time-wise? I know we would like, I think, things to move along quickly naturally. Some of us, yeah. Do we have any idea as far as time, when they can?
They told us that once they get started, it's about a three to four month project.
Yes, a scheduling.
Yeah, I believe within the agreement, there is a schedule.
Three or four.
About three or four months. So I will try to get an answer on the money. They know the situation, and I think what they need to do is probably go back to their board as well.
They have to go back to their board?
Yes.
Right now, they said that they have a $50,000, had been approved for $50,000 on their board.
Yes.
But that was before they knew the numbers, and they have to go back to the board and see exactly what the scope of the work, what it's going to...
These are their guys that they picked. I'm surprised that they didn't know the numbers, you know?
Well, I think it was specific to this proposal, Ryan, and maybe they didn't know that the scope would be as large, as broad, and it's possible that the scope could be revisited as well. It's possible. But I will speak with Mr. Jellison, and we'll, the town will bring the information back to you. Okay. Moving back to the agenda, under number nine. Is there any status in committee report tonight? Public comment? Informal discussion?
Just to follow up on something that was discussed earlier with the lighting and safety. Periodically, people come in concerned about speeding and concerned about safety. And I think the signs, we have the speed warning signs, and they've been up around town, and, you know, I've heard a few good comments about them. I know they're not a, they're not the magic bullet certainly, but could we place them somewhere in the areas that we, that have been identified as troublesome areas, for example, along the ledges? Is there a place where that could go?
Yeah, there may be, Fred. I will ask Lieutenant Malardo to review that, but difficulty there is the space. Obviously, it's narrow in that area, but just after it or just before it is a possibility. We have been asked specifically, because Halloween on Main Street is coming up next, the 30th week from Friday, that we have it placed on Main Street a little before that and during the time, so we are going to be doing that. Right now, it's on William Street at the base of that hill, and I've heard some very good comments from folks there.
I still would love to get, if at some point we could get a permanent one down, you know, by Gildersleeve area, I think, when, because I know Glastonbury has that by a couple of their schools, and, you know, I think it really helps. I think that, you know, I think it was a great decision by the board to buy, you know, this equipment, and I've heard nothing but positive feedback from around town about it, so...
Me too. I think it is very good. And perhaps we could even share with another town. It'd be nice to be able to look to see if East Hampton, but also, or maybe they have one. I don't know. Just on the, in Cobalt area, that would be a great area, I think, to have a speed sign. And also, many, there's many places, and we've had many requests.
Yeah, because we have now the lighting, and we have...
Rumble strips?
...work and representatives.
There's a parpino. Yeah.
Have the rumble strips, so...
And also through her urging, all of those Chevron signs and some of the other signage was all improved because those were getting dated, and they lose their reflectivity. So that's been replaced, the rumble strips, the improvement in the lighting, and there was a local television station... There's been many areas in the state that have seen increase in traffic, and this is one of them, and it would be certainly beneficial if they were able to put that on their list of improvements.
Even the location of their, the speed signs might, might be looked at, I don't know if they have, because if you come in on 66, as I recall, in North, in Cobalt section, the speed limit actually drops a little, and it, and then goes back up when you get into Portland, which doesn't really make too much sense to me.
Could we visit that?
Yeah, I have no.
I have a couple of things I want to say. First is Carl and I toured Agalati Field about a month ago, and I know that we talked about the last meeting that we were going to plant some trees, or we're doing some business on the.
We're actually there today as well, and I could give you some details on the plans.
Yeah, because I, I'd like to see, I mean, it needs, the field needs some work, it needs, it needs some love.
Agreed.
And, and so I'd like to see, you know, you know, maybe work in on the other side of the park as well, you know, take care of some fencing and some, some town-owned land that Carl and I had visited, but I just, which brings me to my next point, because I won't be around long enough to, to see it, and I just wanted to say thank you to everyone here on the board, Fred, Howard, Kathy, Brian, Carl, and Susan here for, this is my last meeting on the Board of Selectmen for, you know, for the foreseeable future, and I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, putting up with me for the past four years and for, you know, helping me out and helping the town out.
It's been our pleasure, and we appreciate your service, as well as Howard.
Oh, yeah, that's me.
I've been here a little bit longer, Howard has been certainly.
How long have I stayed here now? I thought the.
You're done now.
Oh, am I done?
You're done.
You're, you're out of here.
It's actually, there's actually one more meeting after the election. There is one more meeting that you do come to, and then after that.
No, we'll see.
A round of applause for our Selectmen. Thank you very much.
Tommy's tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the calzone business is going to go down.
You can still come and bring us refreshments, that's true, hopefully. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.